Select, uh, the planning board meeting to order for July 12th, about nineteen.
Sixteen.
Huh?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, I'm sorry. Slide sixteen. We're back in time.
Yes.
Hi, how are you?
Can you put that bill first?
Uh, definitely can. So we have a bill here from Berkshire Engineering, I think. It's for... SOLA proposal review for a planning board. Uh, for seventeen, for eighteen, for twenty-two, and for twenty-five. For a total sum of one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars.
What was the project?
Yeah. That's if I remember, was that?
Berkshire Engineering did which one?
Was that Red Rock or?
That was Kendall.
No, Time One did Kendall.
What was for Red Rock?
Uh, I think it was Red Rock.
Nice to know.
Yeah, it would've been nice, what product they were working on.
You want to wait until the next meeting?
Well, we wait so we can actually contact them with clarification for what... That's what I believe. Clarification from them.
Want me to check with them?
Interesting.
Yeah.
You want me to check her?
Yeah, definitely check and find out. But...
We need to know who to charge that back to.
Right.
What account?
Right.
Call it from escrow accounts.
All right, well, we can actually just dive into our current meeting, uh, which is, uh, to go over, uh, continuing the SOLA bylaw review. In reference to the moratorium and, uh, recommendations for, uh, the bylaw.
So how do you want to do this? Do you want to go through our bylaws right now and look at it?
We can go through our current bylaw. I guess after we look at that and see if anybody has any recommendations as to, uh, they like to see changed.
And you want to go through the... I guess what we've been charged with is to review what the state has handed down.
I don't know if that's what we're charged with, but that's...
Well, that's what we're...
One thing we talked about as the last meeting.
That's what we were asked to do, is to review the state recommended. Bob, help me with that. Suggested?
Yeah, recommend, the model, yes, recommendations.
So we should go through that and see what of those make sense and what of those we've already, that are already addressed, right?
Right.
Does that make sense to do that?
We could do that.
That was kind of what we were...
Yeah, that was to look at what the state is bringing forward with the current recommendations.
And Ken had given us three sample bylaws already.
So if we see any of those that apply, we can reference those towns and to see how they addressed it. Makes sense?
So you have this document, this, um, Model As-of-Right Zoning Bylaw, allowing use of large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations from December two thousand fourteen. In the blue. I sent that electronic. This, our bylaws pretty much, these are sample bylaws, our bylaws that we have now pretty much follow this. Except for there's some definitions we're missing and that sort of thing.
Yeah, well, if memory serves me correctly, that was the whole idea, was to comply with what the state was requesting. To comply, to be, to be the, uh... To adopt that so that we could be a green community and be, and be subject to applying for grants.
Now, Ken, are there other stipulations, I guess, or requirements that would allow us still to be a green community? It's not just all based on SOLA?
So, um, I asked the Green Community Staffperson at the... And she printed out this overview guidance, but the board doesn't have this, but there were three criteria that basically should address, you know, should be addressed within the zoning bylaw. Municipality must provide its own designation locations for as-of-right siding for one of the following. So as-of-right is a site plan approval. So no special permit, you know, just...
Kind of going through that process. It doesn't say what size. Um, it says, um, so the, the town has to provide as-of-right siding for one of the following: renewable or alternative energy generating facilities, so in this case it will be solar; renewable or alternative energy research and development facilities; or renewable or alternative energy manufacturing facilities. Um, I think the most important thing here that, that I took away, um, and then after conversing with Jill, was that based on your current zoning bylaw, I believe, um, what I quickly looked at in your schedule of uses, was that you had manufacturing uses in your industrial district as, as a right use, so through site plan approval rather than through a special permit. So, um, I would think that, um, that in itself would, you know, allow you to be complying within this criteria of the green community's designation.
The first or the only, that's only one of, you only...
You all need to, need to have one of the, those following, um, for, for siding, um, so as, as an as-of-right use. So your R and D facilities and your manufacturing, um, are allowed with a, with a site plan approval in the industrial zone. I think in this bullet with this, so this is guidance from DOE R, and this is from Fall 2018. If a community has as-of-right siding in place for R and D and/or manufacturing facilities in general, this can meet this requirement. So, I think, based on what I saw, you know, just doing some quick research on your zoning bylaw, that, that in itself, the, the solar was not, you know, an aspect at the time that got you your designation. And so if the board chooses to, you know, look at solar in a different light, I mean, you already have it via special permit, um, so you go through those processes, but if you want to, you know, create some additional standards, that's not necessarily going to lose your current green community's designation. Because you have those other as-of-right uses, um, in the R and D facilities and manufacturing.
Okay, um, in this document, Model Zoning for Regulation of Solar Energy Systems, dated December two thousand fourteen, it says, um, talks about specifics for green community on page nine? Page number five. And they talk about citing preferences specifically for large scale. It says DOE R allows communities to meet green community's criterion one, this is the criterion one we're talking about for green communities, by zoning for, for the as-of-right installation of a solar facility of at least an acre in size in a designated location. That we don't have. Of at least an acre in size. Unless somebody can point me where we have that. Designated area, but that's one of the criterions for...
Yeah, so the, the document which I was reading from... Is criterion one, as-of-right siding. So as I mentioned, the municipality should be providing zoning in designated locations for as-of-right siding for one of the following. So solar can be a, um, a use that, um, you could provide as an as-of-right use.
That's interesting, and in the OER's document here, it was saying it has to be.
Well, it does say allows community, so, you know, the word allows could be perceived in, in various ways, I think. To me, so that, that's, um, you know, could be questionable, and again, this is from twenty fourteen?
This is twenty eighteen.
This is from twenty eighteen. So I, I don't know if there were changes in the, you know, in the requirements for the criteria, but, um, I think, based on my initial conversation with Jill, uh, in regards to, my first question to her was, "The town wants to amend the solar bylaws. Will they, you know, will their green community's designation be in question?" And she said, "No, because..."
It has one of the following.
Correct.
And I believe when we did this back in, whenever it was, twelve or fourteen, um, I think we had, I think we had to meet more than one of the criteria back then.
Right, so as far as, if as-of-right siding for renewable energy and alternative energy is one criteria, you meet that in providing as-of-right siding in your industrial zone for, um, R and D facilities and manufacturing facilities.
I'm not understanding how R and D and manufacturing connects to a solar project. Why is that, how is that manufacturing, how is that R and D? Thank goodness I have the...
Well, it doesn't necessarily connect to the solar project, it connects to the, to the, um, the green community.
Peace.
Ken, can you send that to...
Yes.
So what we did, and again, this is a while ago, and my memory is, is a little fuzzy, but, so what we did was, we allowed solar, but we didn't do it by right. Our, the way our bylaws read is it's by special permit.
Large scale.
Large scale. Where there's, where, what that's saying is by right in order to qualify. So we qualified with the R and D in the industrial zone as a by right. And then the, the solar, large scale, is, is subject to special permit, planning board with site plan approval.
But that's...
That's, so, so that's not by right.
Right.
Large-scale solar is not by right, it's by special permit. It's allowed...
But it is allowed in residential, which is basically the whole town.
Correct.
So you may want to narrow that.
Then we, then we'd have to back up and rezone the town.
You could do an overlay.
What's that?
You could do an overlay, right? If you do an overlay and say...
Either way, you still have to rezone it as an overlay, whether it's an overlay or R1 or whatever you want to call it. You still have to go back and rezone it.
So allow it in like a certain area only for the large, the big ones, you know?
Well, the, the only place that would allow that would be large bodies of land that would... You can't put a, a three-acre solar system in a, a subdivision.
Right.
So, so in other words, we, we zoned it for residential because the town is made up mostly residential. We didn't want to put it in, in industrial because there's not a, we're better off with industry in the industrial zone for a tax base. We didn't want to put it in the business zone because we wanted a tax base of business versus solar. We didn't want to put it in the, uh, the village common because it doesn't belong there. So there was only one zone left.
I didn't do the zones, did I?
What's that?
I thought it was allowed in industrial life, special permit.
Nope. Uh, RS, let's see.
Oh, duh.
No, and no. I1 and I2, not allowed. If I'm reading it right, hang on a second. No, I'm... No. Incorrect. EC, RM, and it was GB, industrial, yeah.
And residential is allowed.
Yep. It shouldn't have been done, in my opinion.
We didn't change that when we just did our revisions. So right now, it's a lot, large-scale ground-mounted solar is allowed in residential, industrial one and industrial, industrial and industrial two.
To me, that should be changed. Why would you want solar going in where you, where...
Well, you could put it, I, industrial two is where the dump it was.
The dump is.
You could put it there.
Yeah, that would be fine.
That might've been a thought process back then, too. Because right around then, when the dump, as we talked about, the dump closed and... Or was going to close.
Well, why would be, why would we be restricting property owners of potential, of their potential financial gain of leasing property, their property, to solar companies?
For large scale?
Yes.
Depends on, it's also for the good of the town, not just the individual. Okay, you've got to look at, at the big picture, not just the individual, and seeing as we work for the town, we have to look at it from the big picture. So if you're going to take down a whole bunch of trees, fine, they've got, you know, they've got the land, they've got the, uh, the room, but they're taking, are taking down all that many trees advisable for the health and welfare of the whole town.
Okay, so now this comes down to the cutting point that was made in the select board meeting. Clearcutting.
Okay, that's one point, and I think there's something about that in here.
And again...
Pardon?
Something in five, if I can get a clarification.
But again, I, I look at something as far as we've talked about. Clearcutting. And, for instance, if someone, you know, built a house and their property, and at the time when they built that, thirty years ago, there wasn't a lot of trees or anything on that. And over the years, the trees grow and things like that. You know, so like, you know, it's theirs, you know, some of those trees they may have planted.
It says here, DOE R strongly encourages locations that result in significant loss of land and natural resources, including farm and forest land, and encourages rooftop siding, as well as locations in industrial and commercial districts or on vacant disturbed land. Significant tree cutting is problematic because of the important water management, cooling, and climate benefits trees provide.
But you also got to look at, as far as each town, city is different. I would look at, you know, you take something like Granby, probably has a lot more land and trees than a city like Chicopee. So that's, so, to say like, for instance, what you just kind of talked about, that may impact, uh, Chicopee more than it would impact something like Granby. Just on the, you look at the, just the amount of land that is just, that is covered in Granby, which doesn't have houses on it, doesn't have streets on it compared to a city. So like, just kind of comparing, you know, what they're saying, how does that...
But you're not comparing two things, to two, apples and oranges there.
No, because it, this is talking about, this is, they're applying this to everything, regardless of what the area looks like. They're, they're, they're applying this to everywhere.
They're saying you could have a bunch of trees, but you shouldn't, they would prefer you don't cut them down. They're saying, "Don't do it," they're saying they prefer you don't.
But that's what I'm saying, though, that too, there's, there's, there's also towns that have a majority of land that's not being used. So that's, you know, to, this is just a blank statement. I think it impacts a town or a city that has a different makeup in different ways. That's just, that's the point I'm making. It's a blank statement that would impact different areas in different ways.
But how it impacts Granby is what we're concerned about here.
Well, my question would be to look at Granby and really look at the true, what is covered in, um, trees and things like that versus what is taken up by homes and streets and stuff like that? An actual number, you know, is it, is it thirty-five percent that's covered by actual streets and homes of the landmass of Granby? Or is it, you know, that's, that's the true...
It's a number we don't know.
Right, that's something you can actually look at and say, "Okay, well, reality is, we haven't even touched a portion of it."
But it doesn't answer your question, though.
If, if we look at the blue page, Model As-of-Right Zoning Bylaws, Allowing Use of Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Installations, dated December two thousand fourteen. Page two. Top, or the only blue box. No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. Now, when we've done solar projects in the past, we have addressed those concerns by peer review and everything, and, uh, as well, I'm sorry?
And site plan approval?
Site plan and, uh, other boards being included, other, boards here in town being included for their, uh, feedback. So what we have here is something that's dated two thousand fourteen on both these documents, the one that Will has referenced, put out by the same people that seem to contradict each other. Gee, do we live in Massachusetts or what? Okay.
So, I mean, again, we, I think we look at what we feel is best for our town.
But how do we come to some sort of... Plan agreement? Because I think the, the board is divided on how to handle this situation. And I'm open to any and all suggestions.
Again, you know, it sounded like a broken record, because every time we talk about this, about this clearcutting thing, you can clearcut for other reasons. You know, just, uh, if you, if you want to farm your, your land and, and plant corn, you can clearcut. If you want to put a subdivision in, you can clearcut. If you, if you're issued an earth removal permit, you can clearcut. And to me, the benefit that we're getting out of solar... Benefits the community. It's, not directly, but indirectly, that's how they're keeping the cost of energy down.
Okay.
Now, just because the landowner's benefiting from it because they're leasing their land, that doesn't make it a, a bad thing.
No, it doesn't, but all the electricity is going into, is being sold by whoever owns the project, who isn't whoever put it up, because they just throw it out here. Who wants to buy it? And they buy it, and then they sell it to the grid, and they get their money. It's up to...
But there's also...
I don't know how, if that's going to actually convert to less dollars that people have to pay for theirs.
Well, it, it does, because reasons being solar is, is not expensive to maintain. Also, too, if you look at the majority around the country where solar's becoming more popular and popular and is being used, that is actually driving down the cost of energy. Because if you have to look at it, if solar wasn't there, I mean, we don't know what solar, you, you don't know what energy would cost right now if solar wasn't there. It's, it's providing, it's providing, uh, energy back to the grid and stuff like that. Nuclear power for the longest time was, those were all being taken off.
I don't, I, I don't know how you can measurably say how much the town is getting back from these...
Maybe that's a challenge.
Why should the town be getting anything back?
The town residents?
I'm talking about keeping the, the, how do you measure that? By the statement I made that it's, or Glenn made, that it's keeping the cost of energy down.
Yeah, I don't know how you measure that.
Well...
Well, there's, I mean, there's, uh, there's studies out there, whether it's...
You're not burning fossil fuel.
Whether it's for or against it.
That's not good for the environment either.
You're not what?
Burning fossil fuel.
To create electricity. And again, these, these solar fields are temporary. They have a life expectancy of about twenty years. Energy, the, the technology's changing. And, and we, we talked about it at the last meeting, I think it would be a good idea, you, I don't think you were hearing, a good idea that when we issue these special permits, that we review them after fifteen years to see where they're at. Would that, would their particular systems, you know, how long, when do you, when do you think you're going to decommission? And, and, and just because you were permitted for that solar field, for, we should put a, a limit on it for a review, fifteen, twenty years, come back to us. So that they, so that they can't say, "Well, I've got a permit to run a, to have a solar farm here, so I'm going to, the, the existing equipment is obsolete, and I'm going to automatically go back and just put in new equipment." We should, we should be able to review it and put a, a limit, a timeframe on it, if you will.
I, I think it's a good idea.
But those are ones that are already done, it's not...
What's that?
Those are ones that are already done, already permitted.
No, going forward.
Going forward, right.
Part of the permitting process, the condition.
Yeah, those are ones we, but we're still talking about...
Well, that's something that we should put into our bylaw of making it conditional on... on, on, is what, that's what we're talking about, right? I don't think anybody here is talking about eliminating solar fields in Granby. Is that a correct statement? Is there anybody trying to eliminate solar fields in Granby?
I wouldn't say eliminate, I would say maybe limit. You can limit how many large-scale legally that there are allowed in each town.
So it's first come, first served? Yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't know if I'm, I'm on board with that.
So, and this is kinda outside solar, but kinda talking about, Jim, as far as like clearcutting, what people can do and stuff like that. If you've been following, maybe you can do with hemp being grown in the state. There were towns and people don't need to be notified whether someone's decided to grow hemp, uh, in their area.
But they're required to get a state license or permit?
Right, from the state. The state's gonna have to notify the town that they're doing it. So you're talking about clearcutting, someone can turn around and clearcut three acres and decide I'm gonna grow hemp.
Okay, so what's?
But I'm, I'm saying, so it's, 'cause you, you're comparing one like solar, so what's the difference between a, a solar farm or someone growing hemp?
For the purpose of clearcutting.
For clearcutting.
Well, your example there, the hemp's, not, your hemp is not gonna take down thirty acres to do, to grow marijuana.
I can, I can, I can grow, I can, I can take down fifteen acres if I wish to and grow.
I think our bylaws prohibit that, for growing.
Oh, for, for grow, not?
Not, not for hemp.
Not for hemp?
No, you're talking hemp.
But that's what I'm talking about, that's just to make an example.
That's an agricultural, that's an agricultural crop.
But that's, that's, but that's the point I'm making, and a lot of people may not want someone to have hemp growing right next to them.
The state has said it's an agricultural crop. Solar isn't.
However, the state says, no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit the unreasonable regime.
Unreasonable?
Unreasonable regulate or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems.
But the, but the point I'm making is a lot of people don't like having solar next to them in their backyard or viewing and stuff like that.
Large, you're talking?
A lot of solar, so I'm, I'm just making an example of what other situations can be as far as clearcutting or something like that, if someone wanted to do that, then it's, it's just making a comparison as far as what people can do. Where, would you rather have someone, and I'm not saying one against the other, I'm just giving an example. Would you want someone growing hemp next to you, or would you want someone to have a solar farm next to you? And I'm not asking, I'm just, it's a he, a hypothetical question, that, you know, you know, you kinda gotta look at what, you know, directly owns so much, but there's also, you know, do I think, you know, someone owns thirty acres and they should clearcut twenty-five of them to put up a solar? I don't know, I, I struggle that, but it, I looked, I remember seeing one of the, uh, bylaws from one of the other towns, that was one thing they put in there, was actually a percentage of the, the area that could be clearcutted. You know, not to say that's something we do or not do, but, you know, that is, that is an option. I just struggle where, you know, people own, you know, twenty-five, thirty acres and they, um, you know, that they can't use that land for farming anymore, not using it for farming, or something like that, because that was something in the family from thirty years ago. But since then, there's been trees or anything that's grown in over that, that land, 'cause naturally it just kinda happens. And now you're telling them they can't go back and cut down their land.
Not necessarily saying that. What are they putting on it, is, is, is the object, not what they're putting on it?
It's still their land. And at that point, you, so if I, someone could build a house on that land that maybe someone doesn't like 'cause they can't, someone could build a building on that land and it affects their view of the beautiful stuff there.
We have bylaws for all of that.
You know, bylaws affect things like that. If I wanna put up a, if I put up a house that blocks my neighbor's view of the, you know, the mountains, so be it.
But I'm saying, we have bylaws for houses, and, and we have bylaws for a whole bunch of things, which restricts some things.
Solar.
Right, so it's not like you own property, you can do whatever you want and put whatever you want on it, there are some restrictions.
I'm not, I'm not saying that.
In any town.
I'm just saying there are examples of why, you know, properties, uh, you know, trees are, they're cleared and stuff like that, but on the same thing is that, uh, you know, as time goes on, land changes. Doesn't look the same it did thirty, forty years ago. At that point, why can't you tell someone? I, and I, and I'm speaking from my own, my own backyard. In the past twenty-plus years I lived there, it looks nothing like it did twenty years ago when I moved in.
Which is fine.
So, which is, trees and everything have grown in. And not planting trees out there, they're just, they grew. So, if I wanted to go back there and say, well, you can't clearcut that down, but they're my trees, they grew when I lived here.
They're your trees, your, your property.
Right. But if I just wanna, if I wanna clearcut for?
You're saying you can't clearcut. I'm not saying you can't clearcut.
You're saying I can't clearcut for solar.
You can't clearcut big wads of trees for solar, acres of trees, yeah. Then you're into the town health. It's what that other one says. Keep the trees because of the stormwater and everything else.
But I think, and I, that's why I said, that's the drop to Bob, sorry. But that's why I'd like to see of Granby's landmass, how much is actually occupied by roads and houses and stuff like that versus open land.
And who would have that information?
I don't know.
We need to find out, Ken?
Because that would, that would be interesting to see, 'cause then you can actually get a, an understanding how much land Granby is actually not developed.
Well, it would be interesting to do a comparison back to, from current to back to the, let's say, fifties.
Absolutely, you don't have to go back that far.
Probably not.
Go back twenty years ago.
You'll find a lot of open space land in the fifties and sixties.
Open space as in?
Fields, correct, correct. Fields, pasture.
Yep.
Does the town, the town has a master plan?
Oh, yes.
So, in the master plan, there should be some sort of land use diagnostic where, um, you know, based on specific land uses up to when your master plan was completed, um, what percentage of the town is residential, what percentage of the town is that, and maybe from there, um, dependent on how many solar facilities you have approved, or the town has approved, um, you know, integrate that into those numbers, you know, that, to try to figure that out. Yeah, I, I mean, that's to, you know, address the question of, um, how the town has changed since solar's been approved.
It's all in the master plan.
Solar, right? It's actually built?
We've only got one in town.
Yeah. We have one solar project.
It was broken up into five that's per, but it's basically one solar, managed by one company, managed in one, one geographic area.
Right, but the DOE considers it five.
What's that?
The Department of Energy considers it five, because they're different.
That's fine, it's all in one large parcel.
So, could you check that out? I mean, our master plan's online.
Yeah.
Right now, Ken, we need the answer.
You could, it's online.
So I guess we gotta try to make some headway so that we can present. I don't have the timeline.
Okay, look, oh, you don't have any minutes, okay, I got it here.
Oh, and I do have those minutes.
So I, I guess, so.
August five, we have to send our bylaw package to the.
What are, what are our obje- objectives and our goals to accomplish before then?
Well, if I may?
Yes, sir.
We have people in the audience.
We do.
How about if we get some input from, uh, the audience?
I was getting to that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Technically, this is an open meeting, but it's not a input from the public meeting. But I do appreciate you coming, and, um, I agree with Bob, and I know you were kinda raising your hand before, so definitely, unless anybody has any kind of objections, we'd like to have some input, see what people think. Just need to know who you are.
Leanne Russell, St. Louis Avenue Street.
Thank you.
So I'm pro-solar. I'm not a pro-cutting down the doors, and I've looked at other bylaws, um, and they do limit, there are some places that are very restricted, home, two acres, that's unfounded, South engine is restricted as well, um, as far as the size of the trees. I think what we have to just think about is, you know, what the land around us has, if you wanna talk about the history, we've got all those rock walls, we've got a lot of conservation, you know, we should try to retain some of that. And it is true that land values to go down in the next solar farm. I know that the man from Oriole Center isn't, is proven. So we have to think about that for the citizens here. We can't let it happen. So if you go in and reevaluate, you lower your taxes, I mean, there's things to think about. And I think we have to think about water, we've had issues with water in this town, and we have other water. We've got a lot of shovel wells. We have to consider those people, we can't just leave them without water.
How do, how does, how does that affect the water table? I don't understand.
By taking the trees down?
Correct.
It affects the water table.
Yeah, negatively or positively?
Negative.
How? 'Cause I'm curious, how?
Well, they're concerned about contamination. You know, those people here talking about it.
Yeah.
So, they don't want their lives to be contaminated.
But I think we also look at too, as far as part of that plan is, you know, before we issue a special permit, those are things that are looked, looked at. As far as runoff, if there's any, you know, dissonal runoff, that would not be there prior to that. It's interesting.
I thought you were talking about water table, not, not contamination.
And I think, um, I agree with limiting the number of solar farms. You have to have some open space here, that's what people are.
Good morning, Eric. Jim Reesold, St. Louis Avenue Street. I have two acres of land.
It's all right, Jabra, it's okay.
That the town tells me what I can do and what I can't do with it. So, as far as, you know, you worry about, uh, some, somebody forward coming in and saying that you can't clearcut, you can't do this, you can't do that. I got two acres of land that I can't do anything with. And I'm paid taxes on that. So, so there is some hidden take as far as what the town can allow you to do with your land, just like it is with those two acres of land that I have.
Well, what lands I think is more designed that you can't do certain things with it because of state regulations. You can't build on it for certain reasons because it's probably unsafe to do so.
He said, you can't do certain things because of state regulations.
Yeah.
And mind you, that each individual community gets in and adds some of their own rates.
Can we, can we do something to help the local towns?
Sure.
No.
So Eric Russell, St. Louis Avenue Street, I think something that we'll be more concerned is sort of residential setback. I know Belcher Town proposed a twenty-foot residential setback. The proposed, uh, field on Kendall Street, I think the plant set was seventy feet from my property line, was roughly a hundred feet from my back door, and you can't tell me that's not gonna increase my property value, never mind looking at it. If I were, I were to resell it, it would definitely make a huge difference. You know, they, they talk about green trees, you know, shielding it, blocking that, that land, it just wasn't gonna take care of it. So, I think some sort of residential setback from the apartment, something to work, etc.
So, so you're saying that that solar field was a hundred feet from your back door when it was supposed to be a seventy-five foot setback from your property?
The plan, it said, the plan says it's seventy feet from my property, where the solar thing starts, and my back door is roughly thirty to forty feet from my property.
Oh, so you only have a thirty-foot setback from your rear property?
Yeah, from my, my door is roughly around thirty to forty feet from my back door.
Do you have something to say, sir?
Yeah, hey, Eric, two twenty-five, yeah, that's a good one. To save you can clearcut for anything but solar, I mean, if, if you said you wanted to save the trees, you can clearcut and put a development in that's far worse than putting solar in. If you limit what a landowner can do with his property, um, then it values his property. I mean, if you got thirty-five acres and, you know, put solar in, uh, you wanna sell it, I mean, if I got a solar life, gonna play as far as a development, and you're gonna end up with no trees and no solar. I've got three thousand trees, I've planted, I cut them down, they, they're all done now. So.
What kind of trees did you plant?
Christmas trees.
Oh, so you're selling them? Yeah, well, that's a business.
So I planted a couple of more trees, I'll look together when I'm done. It's the same thing, there's, uh, five million acres of land in the state of Massachusetts, Granby is eighteen of those acres. If you do the math, that's like point oh oh three percent of the state. I think if you clearcut the whole town, or you let the whole town grow trees, it's pretty significant. I understand there's a town that you wanna preserve it, but as you said, I've lived in this town for sixty-four years. I just had these fields where there were trees, you mentioned you have stolen walls based around trees, at one time those walls were mortised or filled with, were no trees. The landscape of this town has changed incredibly over the sixty years I've been here. And the longer that we've walked in here, hundreds of years, it was far and better. I don't see why the town is turning down, like Bob said, money for me to rent my land.
Money for you to rent your land, the money goes to you, is what you're saying?
Renting my land, of course, yeah. I mean, you get to be sixty-seven years old looking for a source to income. Just kinda hard to keep farming, it's, it's a little hard. The tax bill's coming in, I get a tax bill, I get what I call a trash tax on these trees that are sold out, why not just on my house? I live on a flat, but I have my tax on thirty acres of trees, it's valuable lots. It's a double spend.
That's a good point. So I, I, I wanna go back to this gentleman's statement, that the setback is our setbacks go from property line.
Yeah, you got that right.
I like the idea of setbacks.
Well, we have setbacks, I mean, and we have setbacks, we have minimums, this is under, when we did this, we put it under special permit so that we've got flexibility to say, you know, the standard setback is seventy-five feet, but because of the terrain and the slope, we could push that section back further. But, but the, the point you're making is the set, our setbacks go from property line, and you're saying structure?
Well, I mean, it could be, but I, I'm positive it's not like seventy-five feet, even, well, from my property line, I wouldn't think seventy-five feet.
Well, from your property line, two hundred feet wouldn't be enough for you.
Yeah, you, two hundred feet.
Because you're, because you're biased, you know?
Well, I am, two hundred feet.
And that's okay, I get it.
Based on the lot behind me, two hundred feet wipes out any potential solar behind me, because that, behind me it's somewhere, but, you know, two hundred feet, I, I think is reasonable. You're limiting the night solar, 'cause they are night solar.
Yeah, they are, and you know what? We've had this discussion before, you can drive up and down two oh two, or any of our rural areas. areas, or the, or the scenic routes, and you're looking at power lines, and transformers, and telephone poles, and high tension lines, those high, we've...
But 30 acres.
What's that?
But 30 acres of steel and glass is an eight solar.
And that's, and that's why we currently have a bylaw in our site plan review where we put in screening. Now, maybe that's what we need to tweak a little bit, the setbacks, maybe we, we need to push the setbacks back a little bit more. Maybe we, we should visit that it should be from the, from the dwelling instead of the property line.
Yeah.
Because if, if we said, let's, let's just use a, a figure of 200 feet. From, from the, from the, from the, from the home, maybe you already have 100 feet to your back line, that, in your case, you don't, and then, then the setback's 100 feet. It sounds like your lots, you're, I don't know what size lot you have.
About a five lot, so they have, my house is in the back of the lot.
Ah, okay. But I would think, you still want to save from the property line, because if you go from the structure, you just have much closer. If you stay from the property line, you want to...
No, but if, what I'm, what I'm saying is, in his case, if we said 75 feet from the property line, that only gives him 100 feet from his house.
Yeah.
We could say 75 feet from the property line, or...
200 feet from the structure.
From, from the structure, some, something along those lines.
Okay, I see, so, yeah.
You follow where I'm going with that?
Yeah, I guess, so it's all, it's an option.
Yeah, I don't know that 75 feet from, well, I guess in some cases maybe it would be, but I just think in a lot of cases, like, 75 feet from a property line isn't enough.
Well, it, again, that's my point, again, with a special permit, 75 feet may be too much in some cases, if you're, why should, why should somebody be, have a 75-foot setback on a property line when there's nothing, there's nothing there but more...
Right. But, or, absolutely.
But from a development, not, it's all residential, but from a development or from a dwelling, maybe that's where we, we look and say, we need, we need more setback.
Right, you could do whatever's, whatever's...
Like, Mr. Randall's property, you know, in the back, why would he want to stay 75 feet? Or why should we force 75 feet off a property line when there's nothing there to begin with?
Right, doesn't make, right. And I would think the same thing for like, for my house, because, you know, you go 1,000 feet off my, my, my back door, and it's still, you know, 75 feet from there, it's not going to make a difference. So maybe we do look at that as a, it's a certain distance from property line, and a certain distance from the structure, whether whatever is greater.
Would that cause problems with potential new homes being built? Well, like this, uh, solar field?
Well, you know, you can't, you can't protect everything. If they're going to put in a development after the fact, who is there first? And again, these solar fields are not going to be around forever.
No, they're not.
The technology has changed.
But that's kind of, I, I mean, I have to, I have to, that, that's kind of a concern, 20 years, who, who's going to take these panels, what do you do? Uh, and as far as deforestation to make, solar is, and it was sold to me, is pitched as environmental friendly. Every month I get an email saying how many trees I saved by adding solar on my roof. So I think when you, when you're cutting down 100% forested property, you know, potentially you're reducing that environmental friendliness of solar, you know, of the trees or something.
If I may, you said that you get a, you get a letter every month saying how many tree, because you have solar, how many trees you've saved. What do they base that on? Or how have you saved trees?
They're basing it on carbon, CO2 regeneration.
They're basing it on how much energy you can, kilowatt hours. Some sort of formula, but I don't know, like, where they come up with set number of trees, like, that's got to be... But that's, that's, I mean, other than saving money with solar, the other pitch is here is they're changing the environment, reducing trees and coal, and that's not...
And actually, solar is more expensive per kilowatt than others. The only thing is the generation, uh, the transportation cost of electricity is bigger.
I'm not saying about windmills.
Yeah. About what?
Windmills. And why I bring, and why I bring that up is because we're talking about something as far as solar.
Windmills are noisy.
I can, so, we're, we're talking about that, so if I want to go out and say, I'm going to clear cut two acres of land, and I'm going to put up six windmills, turnbys.
Then you're going to have a noise issue from your neighbors.
But by right, I can do it.
Not until somebody puts a moratorium on it.
But that, I just, but, but I'm just saying, that's, that's the, kind of the point I'm making where, okay, what's, what's next?
Got to think, you know, just like you said.
Yeah.
Don't you think that solar fields are going to be kind of self-remitting, I mean, you think that they're going to be everything, I mean, they're going to do it for everything, they're going to run their board?
Okay, right.
Well, they, they can only put them now where there's, where there's, uh, the high ten, I think it's 13.8, has to be available to them to, to hook in. So there's quite a few areas in town where you can't, it's not feasible to put them in.
So the solar companies, even when they're putting them on, they're trying to maximize their energy generate, and so if they're going to put a solar field behind me, they're trying to maximize the panels they can squeeze into that.
Absolutely.
Land area, so I, I think what's reasonable is trying to limit that to what the town implies.
Just as any farmer would try to maximize his fields for crop planting.
It's a business, you want to maximize your profit.
Right.
Or any developer with a piece of property for subdivision.
And you have limits in place for that, how many acres, I mean, you have...
I'm sorry?
You have limits in place for that, like you need an acre per house?
Subdivisions.
Correct, yeah, so you have limits.
But that's driven by, uh, no infrastructure, otherwise they'd be quarter acre lots. Because there's no, you need separation between sewer and...
Well...
Septic and well, that's the purpose of having a, a 40,000 square foot minimum lot. It's not, because actually, we have developments in town that are on small quarter acres or half acre lots with, uh, community systems. So that's the only, that's what, that's the only thing that drives that, that's... Or, or areas here in town where the lots are smaller, but there is town water from sub, yeah. The funny thing about this, these, these, this solar, it's all being subsidized by the same entities that are telling us to, to, to take a look at it. What's that?
They'll be solar and wind and all that, and all be generated by the oil companies or, or owners of this stuff.
So as you said, as time goes on, where is solar going to be? And I think, you know, 15 years from now, could solar panels be these little small things that generate just as much energy as the big panels? Now, if you, you know, you talked about your house, you go back 20 years ago, 30 years ago, and look at some of these panels that are on houses back then, they're unbelievable size, so...
Hot water panel?
Hot water panel, or people had it back then for even, also energy. And you look at how small they are now, and how more efficient they are now compared to what they were 20 years ago, so...
I think they're trying to develop some sort of shingles, that's what they do. Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm a solar guy.
So, I mean, it's, you know, I look at the solar farms that are on P Street, and I, I drive by there at least four or five times a week going to work, and I've seen over the past three years, the, it's less and less visible from the street.
But they're also back a couple of feet.
No.
No, actually, they, they wanted some of those solar panels to be up against the property line. However, at minimum, six-foot-high fence was required. And in Grandby, the bylaws state, on a property line, or on a front, frontage property line, a fence no taller than four feet is allowed. So because code required a six or seven-foot-high fence, they had to move everything back 40 feet, which is the setback for building from the frontage, yes.
There's a point I'm making, so over the past three years, so you've seen just the growth of the trees and vegetation around there too, because it's not as noticeable as it was three years ago. But I guess the point I'm making is when it's first put in or first installed, you know, as, as time goes by, and as we see as trees grow, vegetation around it grows, it's not as visible as it was.
If, if we go back to what Jim was saying quite a bit earlier, actually, before we started discussing this with the, uh, the audience, Jim had said that there should be a review period regarding these permits. And I was, I agree with your thought, however, I think that we should maybe have a two- or three-year review period after the, after the certificate of compliance or occupancy or operation is signed, to review to make sure that the screening is working and taking effect.
So you want one as soon as they're done? No?
Not as soon as they're done.
Two years later?
Well, I don't know if two years is a fair number. I think in the course of...
Well, the first of the building inspector has got to sign off on it when it's said and done.
Right, but the screening, but the, right, but the screening wouldn't be in complete effect.
Right, well, I agree with you saying, so maybe it's, maybe it is a three, it's a three or five, and except that, so you actually see that what was, what was said, and we expect the trees to be six feet high in three years, where you go back there, those trees are actually still three feet high.
Yes.
They haven't really grown that much as they anticipated or said, as, as much, you know, that's, that's...
Keep, keep, and, and I'm okay with that, it makes sense. But keep in mind, let's say there was a screen put up, screening put up be, behind your house, and in five years down the road, it died off. You, as a butters, have the right to, 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 uh, put a claim in with the, the building inspector, and they have to come back out and repair it, and replace it. Operating maintenance. It's part of operating maintenance, and it, or, or they get a system deceased, and we can shut them down until they do.
So who comes out though, if they're going to sell the solar property? You know, because that's what a lot of solar companies do, they put them in and sell.
Still a management company, the management company, that's...
Management company, yes.
So there, there's still mechanisms in place to control that through the life of the, the, um, the solar farm. Well, from, from our discussion and the feedback we've gotten from, from these folks, I'm, I'm in favor of, um, putting some language in our bylaws that give us more leeway on a per-case basis with setbacks.
Leeway for everything?
For everything, yeah. So that, so that it's, it's, it's in black and white, where, where we can be, uh...
I agree with that.
More, I, I don't know if it's the right wording, but more arbitrary as far as looking at a piece of property and saying, in his case, we need to push that back a little bit further, or demand some sort of a different type of screening.
But I'd also like to have, kind of what we talked about before, where, where it says setbacks are, are a minimum, a minimum from a property line, or a minimum from a structure, whatever is greater, so it's set there, that's, so that's, you know, we're not kind of picking and choosing from...
That's it, and some of them do.
If we pickle that way, the town boards in, we're not picking from development to development, this is it. But we could go further if we deem it's, you know, maybe, you know, a negative impact on, whatever, we can kind of pick a wording and stuff like that, but I definitely have that, like to have a minimum.
Well, we have a minimum now, but I'm saying, we, the board should have a, should have more, uh, allowance to be able to change that on a case-by-case basis.
But I like to, like you said, kind of look at our setbacks, maybe change some of the wording and increase it, kind of like you said, as far as from... Huh?
Barry has that, the second, third page.
Actually, Barry has, has, as you just said, and these have been approved by the AG.
Right.
So we kind of say, from either from the, the property line, or from a structure, which is greater, or then we could kind of put wording into it. So from Barry.
I got a little section in it.
I hear what you're, you're saying, I just really dislike the word arbitrary distances. Well, I'm saying we have a, we have to maintain a minimum setback, but in some cases, we may require, we can require more now anyway. If, if we feel as though that, um, through, through a peer review, or through a, through looking at it, that, um, that the, the slope is too steep and we need to move it back further, with, so if we've got cause, we can, we can do that now anyway.
That's also one of the setbacks.
Because of the special permit. True. Gives us a lot of leniency.
I, I think I'd rather spell it out than put it in a special permit, because then if you get sued, you're the one that's got to defend your position.
Well, again, it's, it sets the minimum, we wouldn't just say we, we want to push it, there's got to be reason, and sometimes the reasoning comes from the peer review. If, if, in their case, with the drainage, they actually built the, uh, a drainage area around that, around their, their, uh...
Other detention basins.
Yeah. And there was, you don't typically get stormwater management like that. We didn't do anything with the one over on, uh, Lion Street. There was no need, no need to do that. But in this, so it's, it's, it's like saying, everybody's got to put a stormwater management system in.
Well, this one, this one has, um, setbacks, but then it also says the planning board may allow a lesser setback along a property line where in its judgment, the proposed facility is not likely to negatively, negatively affect an existing or committed land use on an embodied property.
So going back, like, right.
It gives you the out there, but it says, it should be, they're saying, uh, solar arrays and related equipment shall have front, side, and rear setbacks of a minimum of 100 feet. In the event a front, side, or rear lot line abuts one or more residences, that front, rear, or side setbacks should be a minimum of 200 feet. Setbacks from a roadway should be at least 200 feet. So, but then they give you the out in that saying, saying you can allow lesser, but start with this. I think that's better than just saying start with anything and...
Well, I definitely have numbers in there of the actual distance. There's a studying board.
Okay, a little paragraph, this is a paragraph of setbacks.
Did you get that?
I did.
And then the other thing about clear cutting, we discussed at the, the last meeting, was, um, if there's going to be a large, um, large area of clear cutting, it needs to be phased, rather than go in there and clear 30 acres and then...
But then you'll have to put, what constitutes something large enough for that to, larger than taking down...
No, 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 what I'm saying is, we discussed it at our last meeting, that they'd have to phase in, in other words, if it was 40 acres they were clear cutting, they could only cut 10 acres before they backfilled it with solar. Do it in phases.
And one of these has that in it.
Yes, that's where, that's...
Yeah, where it came from.
I didn't, I didn't make it up.
Yeah, sure.
Just to make sure that they don't just cut forty thousand or forty acres.
And decide they're not going to put everything in.
So you phase it in.
Yep.
So are we doing anything, or are we just kicking the can down the road?
Oh, well, these are, these are, I think, we can-
These are suggestions that I'm, I'm willing to compromise on, is what I'm saying.
Jim, did you say you had another recommendation as well?
Pardon me?
Did you say you had another recommendation, or have you listed your?
No, the setbacks, the permit review period, if we're going to do it every five years or whatever. But at least, at least fifteen years, so we know what's going on. If the, if the life expectancy is twenty years, I would like to know five years ahead of time that they're going to, they're going to be thinking about decommissioning the product that's there, and if they're, and if they're going to come to the board for a review to put another system in place.
Okay, a replacement. So you want a project review how often?
I do think, I mean, we're not going to have hundreds of solar fields in Grand. So I think it's to say that we'd want it more frequent. Um, I don't think that's a problem, I think someone should be written into it that, um, that's an expense, you know, we got to decide who's going to be inspecting it.
We don't do that, that's, then, that's, that's the code force.
The building inspector, okay. Well, it should be noted that the building inspector wouldn't be inspecting it. I mean, that's, they would do it every, you know, I think Bob said he'd start off in early three years, move to five, and then move to ten and fifteen before, you know. But I'd start early to make sure where they, if things are developing the way they're supposed to be developing.
Or maybe possible to set up a peer review, or-
For?
To see how the project is, uh, progressive.
You're talking before it's completely built?
No.
You're talking after it's built?
Two or three years.
In other words, not necessarily a peer review, a, an outside consultant to inspect.
An outside consultant to make sure they're following as far as?
I don't know, I suppose.
What was stated in our, uh, board of conditions?
Oh, okay. So, yeah, you just want somebody to review, make sure all the conditions are being met here too. Isn't that the building inspector?
It is the building inspector, well, is that, is it, is it keep on changing? If you do keep on changing building inspectors, are they up to what, you know, codes and things like that, or?
So, well, all you've got to do is look at the, list the recommendations or conditions, sorry.
As, as rules and regulations are changing these days, I don't know how much more a single building inspector can handle with the community.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that, you know, is it getting to be more outside their, their scope of expertise, I guess.
The scope and time.
So who would you suggest be responsible on it?
Some sort of a peer review. Or-
All right, so let's, let's, we could put something in the bylaws, we can figure out the exact verbiage for it later.
Or maybe Ken has.
But we can just hire somebody, the town at their expense.
Yeah.
And, and, and pull them off our, our list of, uh, preferred, approved, uh-
Yep, yeah, okay.
You can, you can condition, um, your approvals, um, to include, uh, someone that would supplement your, you know, your, uh, building inspector, specific to the solar project. So, um, normally, and, and the applicant would be, um, responsible for, to pay for that, um, review, more reviews. And you can set in your decisions how often those reviews can happen. So, you know, I think as far as, uh, you don't necessarily have to rely on the building inspector to review, ensuring that the conditions and the site plans are being met and are being complied with when they're constructing and after construction. Normally you'd also require, um, your as-built, um, at the end of the project, so then you would know, you know, if there were any field changes, they should have A, brought them to you, um, to discuss with the board. And then, you know, you would kind of from there assess what you needed to do. You could also ask for a, a bond, um, you know, after construction. If, if you've determined that, um, the construction trucks that have been going, you know, downtown roads, um, have damaged, um, the road, you know. The money that you've collected is, as far as a bond, can pay for that. So, you know, the conditions are kind of, you know, the, the, and normally the conditions are, are the ones that are agreed to by the applicant, because they want that permit. Um, so, you know, that, that's where your negotiations with the applicant, other than meeting what the bylaw, um, is setting up for setbacks, for screening, for, you know, the size of your solar, um, arrays, and what those capacities are. The conditions also play a very important role. And, you know, I think that you can address some of the things you're discussing through a set of conditions.
Without, without putting it in the bylaws?
Uh, I mean, the, the bylaw, it depends. I mean, um, setbacks should be in the bylaw, and that's something that you want, the applicant to demonstrate off the bat. You know, and, and the suggested, um, language that the planning board can determine whether or not that's sufficient or, um, too much, you know, you, you can make a determination. But at the same time, the applicant should be requesting a waiver from those things that he or she don't think that they can meet based on what's in the bylaw. So, um, you know, just taking setbacks for instance, looking at the current bylaw, you know, and I believe I'm reading the correct one. The setback sees section three, use regulations, table of dimension, dimensional density regulations. Depending on the zoning district, for structures other than dwellings, your, you know, your, your setbacks are forty feet in the front, or twenty feet in the rear. Obviously, you know, I think for the instance with this gentleman, the, the board found that there needed to be some sort of increase in, in, in setback. But I think if you were to establish an amount off the bat for solar development in general, that probably would, um, at least address some of the issues of-
Beforehand, you don't have to make it a condition?
Right.
And again, like, like, if there's, if there's nobody there, they can come back to us and ask for a waiver to, to bring it to, instead of two hundred feet, to bring it to a hundred feet or whatever. But like you said, it's up to the applicant to-
Right, and that, the peer reviewer would probably catch that in the peer review, because we've had some peer reviewers who they've said, and they've asked for a waiver on blah, 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 and we, I recommend yes, no, or whatever. We'd probably get most of those at that time, probably.
So I guess we'll be out with a discussion or feel comfortable with setbacks as written into the bylaws? Do we want to come up with actual distance and language at this point?
Yeah, our actual numbers.
I, I would always recommend, I would always recommend some sort of number. For setbacks. In regards to development in general.
Right.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, I personally don't like the forty foot setback from the frontage.
Is it not enough?
Not enough. What is enough? Two hundred, I think is a lot more than needs to be. Is one hundred good? Is fifty good? And I, and I'm almost, I'm almost, and I, I am open to any conversation on this, thinking that whatever frontage setback we choose should quite possibly be rear and side as well. Where we're creating a box within a box, and the box, the original box being the property lines.
Well, you've got to be careful of that, because if you're talking a two acre solar farm-
Yeah.
You've, you've whittled it down to-
Yes, however.
And so, so at one, hang on a second. In one minute, we're trying to say, well, let's, let's eliminate the clear cutting and the size and the location. And now we're saying, let's, let's minimize or maximize the setbacks.
Mm-hmm.
If you stick with one, it kind of governs the other. If you do both, then you might as well just say forget it.
That's a fair argument.
You're going to handcuff all the landowners in town that want to do something with their property.
If you, if you go back to what they're saying in Bear, Barry, Bear?
Barry.
Barry. You say Barry, you said Barry, you guys aren't helping out. So they, they talk about, um, you know, or you can be less, depending on the project. So I think that's fair. To me, I, I think a hundred feet from a property line, two hundred feet from a structure. Whatever, to me, that's what I'm saying, whatever is greater. Now, so my house sits on a three acre lot. My property line is way back or wherever. It's, you know, it's almost a thousand feet off my house. Well, that maybe could, that the board will look at that and say, okay, that, unless the, uh, the butter has an issue with it, would you be willing to, you know, else we have our meetings and stuff, where the butters says, no, I don't, I'm fine with that, I don't, I don't care if we waive that, because that's, you know, so far from my house, doesn't matter to me.
So you're saying a hundred feet from the property line, two hundred feet from the nearest dwelling, or the nearest building? Is it they got a shutter something that there, that would be counted, right?
I even think a hundred feet is an awful lot.
Why would I say that, because, so my house sits back about a hundred and fifty feet from the road, and it's not that far.
But if you create that hundred and fifty feet on four sides, as Jim said, you are dwindling down the footprint that you have that you could potentially work within for solar.
But depending on the size of someone's lot that they have. I think a lot of things that we, we are seeing are not a two, three acre lot, as people are talking about, the ones that come forward, but-
Take, take six acres and do that to, and see what you end up with.
So is it two hundred feet from a nearest dwelling, or a nearest structure?
Well, I'd say dwelling, because I'm thinking of someone's house, not someone's shed that's a hundred fifty, a hundred feet off their house.
Boy, two hundred feet is long.
So, so you're saying two hundred feet from the house and a hundred feet from the property line? Whichever is-
Whichever is greater. Those can always be changed though, too, because like you said, that where it comes, it may not, it may not impact the person, you know, as you said. I think Barry, they talked about, it could be less.
Yeah, it says the planning board could allow less.
So it gives the planning board an option, where the butler may say-
You give them a number just to aim for.
I don't care, that doesn't come close to my house, I don't like that.
You're going to get very through to say that, trust me.
If their property, well, if you just leave it at, well-
I think the front, the setback off, I, I agree with Bob. The setback off the street frontage needs to be greater than forty feet.
From, from where?
From the road.
The frontage.
From the road, frontage setback.
So structures other than dwellings, we've got minimum frontage of a hundred and fifty?
No.
Am I not reading it right?
That's along the street line.
That's through the street line.
That's not setback. From where the structure would be placed.
So we don't have that in here anywhere?
Forty feet.
Minimum front yard, forty feet?
Right.
That's it?
That's it.
That's a setback?
Mm-hmm.
So the minimum frontage is, is this way?
Correct.
Okay, I'm getting it, okay.
Along the road line.
Uh, side yard is fifteen, uh, depending fifteen, yeah, fifteen.
There's not a big, distance wise, I don't think there's a big difference between forty feet and sixty feet. But if someone's putting up a, a solar farm, it's a big difference being right on top of you. Because forty feet could seem like it's on top of you, where a hundred feet may not. And, and I just look at my house now, where I am now, where, so if your frontage is a hundred and fifty, the minimum, your, your minimum lot's a hundred and fifty feet wide at the street going back. So your chances are your neighbors are at least, at least fifty feet from your house.
Gives them more room to put up screens.
Pardon me?
More, gives them more room to put up screens.
Or like you said, it could be, it could be less. And I know we, we kind of said, you know, if the butters agree or not, but that really doesn't say the butters have to agree. It's what the planning board decides with a special permit.
So one thing is, um, the setback from the property line.
I guess we could do any different, you know, from the front or from the back, but-
I like a bigger number, you know, front from the road. Maybe, maybe you're not going to see it as you're driving by, you know, if you're a hundred and fifty or two hundred feet from the road.
How much?
Hundred and fifty, two hundred feet, that's what Barry had in there, two hundred feet. Right, you probably wouldn't see the solar field maybe possibly, through some forest.
Well, I'm more, right now, this is more talking about, I was talking about the, the structure of a house or something like that, but it's you're saying, you know, what's, what's-
If the ones on East Street were a hundred and fifty or two hundred feet back, you probably wouldn't see them now.
You wouldn't see them period, because there wouldn't be anyone else there.
They wouldn't be there.
Because they're small lots.
Yeah, they're just small lots, yeah. But they're probably, they're probably just forty feet back. I know we already had this discussion, more than that.
The defenses at least are forty.
It's not the greatest part of town right now, I think, East Street. You saw it, Tom?
Like I said, you drive by it every day, just-
Most times, a lot of big lots, you know, with the whole, it's west over town.
So are we still going back and forth on, uh, property line?
I get, you know, if, if you're developing a hundred acres, and, and a thousand feet of it, fine, set it back a hundred feet or a hundred and fifty feet. But if you're only, if you're only developing four acres, you've got four acres, and you use, you use your formula, two hundred feet setback, you've got nothing.
Well, it depends on the four, four acres of setup, how it's, well-
So Rob, you were saying two hundred feet from the property line?
No, from the road.
From the road, no, just look at the Barry one, you got a two and a few from the road.
As opposed to-
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not as concerned as far it is from the road versus someone's house. To me, that's more impact on someone's house, someone that lives there.
But then again, we try to, or the planning board when the bylaws were developed,
tried to implement screening that would help to reduce the visibility of such projects.
Right, and that's the kind of point I'm making, where on East Street, it's a big difference three years later, four years later, when it looked like it was first put in. Because things have, you know, trees have gotten larger, and the bushes and stuff have grown and stuff like that. So it's definitely a, a different visual than it was three years ago. I would imagine probably six, seven years from now, I might not even be able to see it anymore. I know it impacted a house on East Street very much, because it was almost right in their backyard, but there was some trees and stuff that were put up. And I actually, I understand it's a different view during the winter versus the summertime, but-
Well, not really, because we, we're reporting to city, uh-
Arbor Valley?
Yeah, Arbor Valley, so the other ones, I'm talking about, there is a different look versus some of the trees that are there now, that are in, you know, full bloom versus the wintertime, but still, it, it's not as noticeable now that it, it was three years ago.
So Rob, two hundred feet from the road and, uh, anything from my house? Do you care?
From the house? Yeah, at least a hundred, I think.
What if, what if you own, if you own the property that the solar field is going on and you live in said house?
Well, that comes back into where the.
The planning board is, yeah.
The planning board could say, well, well, we'll waive that requirement.
Red rock, the butters were.
The owner.
Right, yeah, where those things can be waived. I, I, I just think a hundred feet from someone's house is close.
You'd like to sit higher?
But it wouldn't go any, well.
That's why I'm saying, to me, I think two hundred and fifty feet from someone's actual structure, their house, the dwelling, I think is.
Two hundred and fifty feet?
Two hundred, did I say two?
Oh, well, I think a hundred's a lot.
So, so I'm thinking, so three hundred feet's not that far. Two hundred feet, I think I said right, two hundred feet, a hundred, a hundred from the actual, no, seventy five, seventy five is the property line, was it?
A hundred from the property line, two hundred from the nearest dwelling, is that, you sticking to that?
Well, first of all, a home is supposed to be, is off the sideline, it's supposed to be twenty feet or fifteen feet off the sideline. So that's a side lot and then forty off the rear, right?
Twenty.
Twenty off the rear.
A single family?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, rear, yep, twenty.
So with that being said, if, if we went with a seventy five foot or an eighty foot setback, eighty foot off the front, street front, seventy five, seventy feet off the property line or eighty feet off the property line, that would give you your hundred feet from the dwelling.
So eighty feet off the property line.
Right?
Yeah, but I think a hundred feet's too close to dwell. I think I said two hundred, did I? No, rewind that please. Um, I think I said two hundred feet. And, and to me, a hundred feet isn't that, it's not that much in reality. I mean, a hundred feet is that house right there.
But it all depends whose property it is, it's, if, if a property owner wants to develop a solar field, then we're kind of hamstringing that person.
We're trying to make two things, I think, we're trying to make, I would say restrictions, but they, regardless, they are kind of restrictions. But it's, I'm trying to be fair to thinking of the, uh, the neighbor, but also thinking of the landlord that wants to maximize his property for a profit, which is understandable. So the thing is.
Yeah, but you're, we're coming up with setbacks, assuming that the, the, the sub, the, the solar thing is gonna be a sixty acre. So with sixty acres, yeah, you can go with those kind of setbacks, but we're putting setbacks in place for someone that may be putting a six acres in. You come, you come in a hundred, two hundred feet around the perimeter of six acres, and what do you have?
And you?
Mr. Randall could have.
You may, you may have.
It depends, I mean.
You'd end up with a strip, with a strip in the middle.
It all depends on how that, how that lot is, is.
That's why I'm against coming up with these blanket setbacks of such large degree. What, two hundred and fifty, two hundred feet's all.
Yeah, if you have a two hundred foot wide lot, it's long and narrow.
So, so.
Yeah.
What's, what's the square, forty thousand square feet?
Forty three thousand, five sixty is an acre.
Is an acre, but a building, a building acre is forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
So do the dimensions on that? Two hundred by two hundred?
Right, yeah.
There goes an acre.
You're not going two hundred by two hundred, you're going two hundred from someone's structure. So i- if, if my, if, like I said, so my property line, and most, most houses have, I would think, probably at least fifty, fifty feet off the structures of the backyard. I would think, in Granby.
So, so you're basically saying a hundred and fifty off the.
Right, and that's why a small portion, I mean, most of your houses in Granby are on a bigger lots.
No. Forty thousand square feet.
Is it, but that's a good sized lot and most of them.
It's the minimum law, a lot.
I understand that, Bob, but I'm saying it's a good sized lot and I would see the, how many actual houses in Granby are actually on a one acre lot? Or not, a forty thousand square foot lot.
Mostly, or less.
I, I beg your question.
Most of the older ones.
A lot of those places where the older homes are, either they have a lot of land attached to them or they're, they're around a lot of the smaller houses.
For the sake of moving this along, maybe we can come up with, come up with some sort of formulas, maybe some other towns have used other than what you showed us here. And move on, we're just talking setbacks, we've talked about some other things too.
Well, you know, when I was speaking of formulas, if we look at table two, the density regulations, uh, under, under every single, single family, single family estate lots, multifamily, there's a maximum lot coverage percentage, you know, for the structure. So suppose to go with a dimensional, you could do a maximum lot coverage. And we would still have our screening order in place. And also let's be reminded that now, the way the state is run, or the rules are, that if you effectively clear more than forty three thousand, five hundred and sixty square feet, you have to do the SWIP, I think it is, which has to be approved by the state, is that correct?
Correct, that's the, your stormwater.
Correct.
So as soon as you alter the first acre, um, stormwater comes into play and that usually is for developers, cost prohibitive if you're going to do like a two acre solar field. Um, you know, so usually when you're developing large, twenty plus acres, either way, you know, the planning board will be reviewing, um, through its peer reviewer, the stormwater considerations. That is what's happening with a lot of the clearing, um, stormwater and, and very, and the way the water flows is usually of a big concern to towns. And that's why, you know, the peer reviewer is there to, um, work with the applicant to ensure that no increase in runoff is going to occur. But, um, yeah, I, I mean, to answer your question, um, you know, that, that there are other, um, permits and considerations at play once you alter that first acre. So I, I haven't seen any smaller, I, and I don't know, you know, the, the previous solar fields that you've approved, um, what has the size been, um, you know, I guess what was the smallest one that you approved, ground mounted?
I don't remember.
How big is?
They're like five acres, some of them, I think, or a couple over on East Street.
They took and combined a couple of, two or three lots.
Right.
The west, west over metropolitan.
And that's just because that's the way the property was broken up at that time.
Yeah.
It was actually, it was houses that were actually on different sized lots.
And that's, I think, what ends up happening is you just activate all these lots to create, you know, the size of the parcel that you want to develop these fields in. Um, the, the, you know, the board already has identified that you need to have at least two acres, um, in any of those districts to start, um, you know, to be able to develop solar. I don't know, you know, other towns have identified a minimum, um, lot size to start solar development, um, that I've seen. And I think, um, that, uh, cause it's, it's not in, in your solar bylaw, um, the, to address the, um, various impacts to your butters is, um, listing some sort of vegetation or vegetated buffer. Um, whether it's a planting of trees or shrubs or whatnot, um, just creating that visual buffer if you don't want to establish a bigger setback per se.
You're saying we don't have any specifics in our.
I, yeah, I don't see any specifics in the bylaw in regards to vegetated buffer, um, which is.
It just says clearing, land clearing, soil erosion and habitat impacts, not much to talk about.
I think that's specific to when you clear.
Not seeing anything at all.
Unless, and I, you know, I haven't looked at your entire bylaw, but if you have, if you address uh, non-residential development and, and create, um, buffers between certain districts, you know, that would apply in this case. But if that's not present in the bylaw, then currently you don't have any, you know, there's no, um, requirement for applicants to provide any sort of vegetated buffer between properties.
So they just start with whatever they want to.
Well, they start with a setback and, you know, usually, you know, they, they, they will try to minimize any impact to the butters, however, you know, for them to build however large they want to build, they'll cut up to a certain point and then, you know, keep the remaining, if it, if it is for, you know, forest land, um, keep the remaining as a buffer and they would probably include that as their buffer to abutting properties. So, I don't know, that's just, I guess, considerations. But I, the board may have looked at this in the past as far as these buffers between properties, um, in addition to establishing setbacks that are not specific to how it's listed currently for, um, structures other than dwellings.
So if we made changes in our solar bylaw that has specific numbers for them to say start up it, we'd also have to change that table?
Um, no, you can make a note, make a note in the table that says, um, for solar development, you know, see.
See the solar bylaw for specifics?
Yeah.
That would be a change in the, that would be a bylaw change.
I, I think we need to put together, agree on something, put that to rest. Another thing, put that.
Setback, so Ken's gonna look up. Excuse me, other town formulas for setback. We'll go from there. We've already kicked around a hundred from property line, two hundred from nearest dwelling, whichever is greater, or two hundred from the road, at least a hundred from the nearest dwelling.
Maybe if you think two hundred's too far, I mean.
I personally do.
Well, what would you think's reasonable?
Fifty, seventy five.
The dwelling?
From property line.
Well, well, my, my biggest thing is the dwelling in someone's house, that's, property line is, could be, you know, it could be.
The, the house.
Could be less, obviously.
The butters' house could be fifteen feet off the side property line. And conform to.
And then you add seventy five feet to that and that's where.
Or fifty feet.
And that's where your screening begins.
That's where the fencing.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the, the example Eric actually gave from his, his property to where it was going, that's kind of what I'm thinking of.
Well, I think, you know, you can have your general setbacks from the property lines, but then also include in no instance shall there be more than, what, one hundred and fifty feet? Um, like that should be the minimum distance between the solar array, the edge of the solar array to a dwelling unit. Um, you know, similar to how it's applied in, um, if you were working on your marijuana bylaw where you have a certain structure, um, and then from that structure, there is a minimum amount of.
So it'd be fair to say that the panel, the panel array must be at least two hundred feet from the structure? Or is that really, you think that ties the area to? Because there's always got, there's always have to be a setback already from the property line for the solar panels.
Well, then if you have a whole bunch of houses in the back row, then your line's gonna be kind of like this, right?
Yeah, if everybody's, if everybody's backyard doesn't line up equally.
Yeah.
Correct.
Well, right, but doesn't that necessarily mean it's, they're solar farms, they're gonna be like this, it could just be, we're gonna go straight down. We'll take the closest one, the furthest one that meets it. I'm saying instead of going like from a property line to property line, more towards, my thing is, is the, the structure is the actual, the panel that someone's looking at. That's what I'm saying, so if we say it's actual panel, that's gotta be a certain distance from the structure.
Well, they're not gonna see the panel, they're not gonna see the panel. You're talking two different things, you're talking a setback and then we're saying you can't see it anyway, cause we've gotta put screening in.
That's right. Well, yes and no, it depends on the, the house, depends on how the house is set up. Someone may have a walkout basement, so their, their house is elevated. And below that, you know, yeah, I look right out, cause all I see is that. I'm just trying to be, at both sides, I see if you can form up an agreement that is somehow fair to both the neighbor of a, someone that lives next to a solar field and also the person that wants to put the solar field in. That's it, that's all. And we may be already, like you said, as far as the setbacks from, because solar, solar panels can't be right up against the property line. Right, there's a setback for that. For that, take that.
We're going from zero to a hundred in six seconds here, we're going from a forty foot setback to two hundred and fifty feet.
We said two hundred and fifty feet, it didn't want. But I'm, but I'm saying, but as far as, so it, it's forty feet from the property line for a structure, is that correct?
Then it's correct, from the front property line for a structure.
Which from the rear, the sides?
Rear is twenty feet, fifteen feet from the side.
So at a minimum, it's. So if I have a house here and, so it's only fifteen feet or would it be thirty feet because that house gets to fifteen feet?
It's thirty feet.
So it's thirty feet.
Structure to structure.
Structure, so reality is we're not really that far out. We're at thirty feet, if I say, okay, we can maybe a hundred and fifty feet, not two hundred feet.
Yeah, but a hundred and fifty is five times thirty.
But again, I'm trying, I'm trying to think of, I'm just trying to think of the neighbor that's saying, okay, thirty feet, so this is my house right here and the solar farm is pretty much where the sidewalk is out there. I'm just trying to think of, you know, how to index that person to, you know, as a neighbor, as well as how it's gonna impact the person that wants to put up.
What if they were looking at a house? What if you built a house there? The setbacks there, you're staring at their house. Or a barn or, or whatever, you can't, you can't regulate that.
And again, that's the reason we have public hearings.
Of course, we can regulate.
We have some public hearings for public, uh, for public input.
But we need to come up, so we need to come up with, you know, a starting point. But we need to come up, so we need to come up with, you know, a starting point, you know, and maybe the public says, oh, I I think that's absolutely crazy.
I think a hundred and a hundred fifty. I liked yours, Glenn, a hundred feet from the property line, two hundred feet from the nearest dwelling. And Rob, you said two hundred feet from the road. That would be the, and you were talking front property line with a hundred?
I my my biggest thing is the property lines aren't aren't my biggest concern, my biggest concern is from the dwelling. Someone's properties and then, you know, we, you know, same thing, reason why you set up boundaries so houses aren't built on top of each other. So I look out my window and I'm looking into my neighbors, you know, living.
That's not why they, that's not the way they, that's not why they are the way they are. As a matter of fact, Pioneer Valley promotes cluster housing, which would put us on quarter acre lots. We don't do it because we don't have the infrastructure to support it.
But a lot of people look for, I mean, well, I think a lot of them move the grant because there's that open space of areas where they.
Yeah, I've heard that argument before, and you can talk to somebody that lived here sixty years ago and can say the same thing about a development that just, it's like you can't. I don't like that argument.
No, but I'm just saying, even look at developments that that go in, your houses are not on top of each other, like some places.
But I'm saying it's not by choice, it's but because we don't have the infrastructure to have the setbacks first between well and sewer or setback. Otherwise, Pioneer Valley's come to us several times about over the years.
Cluster developments.
Cluster developments, yeah. More open space, but you can't do it.
But also maybe, I mean, we did that that survey that they did some time ago, right? Could have something to do with that thought, reasons why it doesn't do it, they want some.
Part of probably part of your master plan, you usually, you know, start out a survey. I I pulled it up, I I did um see the um the allocations that were established for the amount of certain types of uses within the town. And um this doesn't necessarily state com- um solar, um because solar would probably fall either under commercial or industrial. But it says that your undeveloped land obviously is um wait. Your undeveloped land is in decreasing, yeah. Um but for in instance, uh eighteen thousand acres in size for the the town. Um of that, ten, eleven percent is residential, point seven, commercial, point one, industrial, sixty-six point four percent forest, eleven point eight percent farmland.
Sixty-six.
Yeah, what's the sixty-six percent?
Sixty-six point four percent is forest.
It's because of the oil law, right?
Um eleven point eight farmland, point seven recreational, three point five urban open lands, and six point one wetlands and water bodies. And obviously of those, some would be protected.
That's probably changed what he used in master plan, like was that two thousand?
Well, this actually, this is.
Twelve?
Two thousand and five.
So the past fourteen years, it's been a lot of development, too, fourteen years.
Not as much as you might think, went through a recession, there wasn't an awful lot of development in the past twelve years.
Jennifer Maximilian was before that.
You know, if you say they built a hundred houses over the past fifteen years, I think that's even reasonable to say that.
So we still don't know about setback?
No.
Right, we haven't gone to that.
Well, I said, we we have our our public meetings and uh we have a number set and, you know, because we get input from what people think as well.
Well, we need to come up with something as a starting point.
Well, that's, you know.
I think a hundred feet from any property line is more than sufficient. And if you wanna go a hundred and fifty feet from a dwelling, fine, because a dwelling should be close to fifty feet off their property line anyway.
So a hundred feet off the property line, any property line?
Well, at least fro- at least off the off the road frontage, I would say.
Right off the what?
Road frontage, setback.
I can agree with that as a member.
A hundred feet, what about the back?
No, that's five times as much, Bob.
No, it's two and a half times.
Off of thirty feet.
Well, I think you should use, we should use the language that you set up uh the backlog at at whatever we decide and then and then have the the ability to to change it if it doesn't.
So you're not doing anything specific from the back, or you're taking like somebody else's?
Where did you pull it off, or was it the one that Barry, is it Barry that had it approved?
There, yeah. But they didn't have any actual, they had numbers there?
Yep.
Yeah.
Actually, there was, there was a distance from the street, wasn't there?
Two hundred.
Thirty feet, yeah.
The what?
The barriers.
All facilities shall have front, side, and rear yard setbacks of at least fifty feet for any fencing that is required by the planning board. Fencing shall be required to fully enclose the project. Solar arrays and related equipment shall have front, side, and rear setbacks of a minimum of one hundred feet. In the event a front, side, or rear lot line abuts one or more residences, that front, rear, or side setback shall be a minimum of two hundred feet. Setback from a roadway shall be at least two hundred. You could go in circles reading this.
Like increasing it by sixty feet is is reasonable, like it's a hundred feet off the off the uh.
Frontage?
The street frontage. That that puts it, that sets it back quite a bit, and then you put screening in front of it, yeah.
So a hundred back from the street frontage, say like Glenn's house, from the front of, from the road in front of his house, you're, then you're putting it right up in, in his house, right? If it's, if you're saying this project, solar project, has to be a hundred feet off property line from the front, from the road frontage?
Front property.
Um off front property line, which is, which doesn't work in Glenn's case, he's a hundred and fifty feet, right? Am I not reading this right?
I don't understand the correlation.
Yes, he doesn't understand.
I don't either.
Okay, so a hundred, a hundred feet off of front property line from the road frontage, same thing, right?
Right, so if that's what it, so it's it's gotta be a minimum a hundred feet off the road where where I'm gonna start to build a solar front.
So if they put one behind you, they're gonna put one starting in the middle of your house, before your house.
Well, they couldn't.
You're gonna be in it.
Well, they can't, because now it's not.
A hundred feet from the back property line, right, is what we're saying, too?
They're saying the front, the line, in the front.
You mean if there's a vacant lot beside Glenn and somebody wanted to put solar on a six acre lot next to Glenn?
I see just.
I'm just talking about behind him. Am I confusing everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say some, say somebody, whoever owns the land behind your house.
Yeah.
Wants to take down a bunch of trees and they wanna put a solar project in it. You're saying the solar project has to be a um one hundred feet from the front property line, where's?
Minimum.
That's the front, there's a front and a back and a side that we're saying, too, right?
Their front property line, which would be your back property line, right?
No.
Okay.
It does not work that way. Your, the frontage to any property borders a street.
Okay, so the frontage is say over there, wherever the nearest street is that can get into this pump of trees. So it would be potentially a side vision of Glenn's house. Depending on where the road came in.
I'm trying to think of the best way to.
But I guess, but like I said, though, too, but where they have this caveat where more lesser, so that the planning board can be, no. It could be lesser uh amount based on.
If there was a lot of equal size of Glenn's lot, next to Glenn's lot, next to Glenn's house. And if somebody wanted to develop a solar array there, this lot next door. That solar array would have to be placed a minimum of a hundred feet from the front property line.
Right, I understand that, I was talking about if somebody behind him was taking those trees, and you're saying it has to be coming near from the road getting in there. So wherever the road is, that could end up being, say that worked out here, and his house is here, this could be the sideline then.
You're almost opening that can of worms.
Okay, so.
If we get into estate lots.
Well, that's, I was, I was, I was, I was thinking of that, too, the the forty foot front, I'm not even bringing that up, then.
So all we have is um a hundred feet of the property, front property line.
You're really making me think now, because we could be talking estate style lots.
No, you can't, because you can't, you can't do that, you gotta have the the the, so if you got an estate lot, right? And you gotta maintain a hundred feet of frontage or setbacks, what have you got? You don't have anything you can build on, you can't put a solar on that unless you've got an estate lot that's twenty acres.
However, if you have the minimum forty foot required frontage.
Yeah.
For an estate lot.
Yeah.
The way the the bylaws read is you have to come into your estate lot on a access strip. And then wherever the estate lot opens up to a minimum of a hundred and fifty feet wide, parallel with the street line. The front of your house, in the case of an estate lot, has to be a minimum of forty feet back from where it opens up to that hundred and fifty feet. So is that gonna apply to that kind of lot configuration?
You guess, you only have a forty foot setback for a dwelling, you got a hundred foot setback.
Okay, however, is that the way we're gonna word it for if somebody has an estate lot that they wanna put solar on?
Okay.
So the minimum setback would be a hundred feet.
Still be a hundred feet.
From wherever it opens up to. What if it doesn't open up to a hundred and fifty feet?
Then you can't put a solar farm there.
But, but it's not a dwelling, those are the dwelling rules and regulations now.
The setback says from the street frontage.
Right.
For what?
For the solar.
Hundred feet from the street frontage.
But what if somebody had a thirty acre parcel?
Then they have, so then they'd have to be two hundred feet off the street, because if the front lot, if the front property line from that flag lot is a hundred feet off the front. Then they'd have to be another hundred feet behind that, from where the property line is, because that's what we're saying, a hundred feet.
You said a hundred foot off the front property line, you didn't say anything about the others.
Well, whatever we decide on the others, so you're saying this.
Digital time.
Right?
No, I am not saying that.
What the hell are you saying?
I'm in a state lot.
Here, you can, you can draw.
Would it have to be fifty, a hundred feet back from that?
We haven't determined what the setbacks are off the the property lines, we're just saying the street frontage, it has to be a hundred feet off the street. So and so if we say forty feet off of a a a property line, then this is, this is Glenn.
Mm-hmm, and somebody building in back of it.
Someone building in back of it. So whatever we determine off the property line, if it's a, if it's a hundred feet, it's a hundred feet.
Right, so this, right, so he's gotta be, say, if you said he gotta be fifty feet off my property line.
Basically what you're.
So he could be a hundred and fifty feet off actually the street.
Jimmy, can I have that?
Yeah.
That being one, this being the access strip.
That's the property line of the other one, right?
Glenn, Glenn's shared property line with whoever this person is.
So they have to have an access from the road up here.
They do, it's just right there.
Right, that's this pole, access strip.
They already do, you're saying, in your particular case, or you're?
My case is nothing like that.
No, no, this is all, right, this is all.
He's not letting anyone throw on his property, so this is all hypothetical.
This is all hypothetical.
It's all hypothetical.
Because you're, you got me thinking about estate lots, so how far back do we start a solar array on this kind of a lot?
Well, because you gotta go from the property line.
It's gonna be a minimum of a hundred feet.
Right.
But how far from this line?
Right.
Well, that's the property line, that's we, that's the next thing I talk about, the property line.
That's the next one.
Well, no, as Jim pointed out succinctly, we're talking about road frontage.
And I think we just determined a hundred feet off the road.
Yeah, right, we read it, like, you know, if they're okay with a hundred feet off the road. So that would be it.
But then we have to address the other property lines.
Yes.
And Jimmy, you were saying sixty feet?
I think a hundred feet, I think, two hundred feet, I think that's just about sixty feet, eighty feet maybe?
I was thinking fifty.
From the, from the side or from the?
From the side and the rear, that's what I, my thoughts.
What do we got now at the rear, twen-?
Twenty.
Twenty, that's small.
So if you go to sixty feet, then, and then there goes a, you know, the, the screening.
How many feet?
It's twenty-nine.
From the rear? And what do you, what do you think about?
In Eric's place, they could build twenty feet from his back property line, right?
What, I'm sorry, say that again, please?
In Eric's situation, they could build it twenty feet from his back property line.
No, that's Eric's back property line, that's not the abutters back property line.
They're not one in the same?
No.
There's a gap in the middle there?
No.
I'm confused.
I'm confused.
And Ken can help me out.
Because the a- the applicant will have to demonstrate for his own property, um if you were to say that it had to be two hundred feet from the street, whether or not you had a parcel in front of you, there should be two hundred feet between the array and the street. You know, I think the buffer, the buffer lan- or the language that says uh that that you may be introducing that suggests a hundred, a hundred fifty feet between the end of, the edge of the array to the uh the abutting dwelling unit, or even a a dwelling. or even a dwelling unit in general, which could be on your own lot, if you're saying that that's specific to that land. So I think questioning whether or not, and maybe I'm misinterpreting this, but I think what you're getting at is basically that we're, we shouldn't be addressing the abutters, the, abutters property at all. You're, you're addressing the property in which you're trying to build the solar array and having that demonstrate that it can abide by all of the.
All the setbacks?
The setbacks.
Right.
That's kinda what I was saying before where there's a minimum of the actual panel being from a structure. There's nothing to do with it. It just says it's gonna be, you said a hundred and fifty feet. So from this panel to that person's house is a hundred and fifty feet in between. So you, you're right. So we kinda, that's, that's a straight figure. Doesn't have to do with the property line. That's just. So kinda about, see, what Lil was saying or asking is that if you have a property line, my house goes fifty feet, there's that property line there. Where does the person get to build? If the requirement is fifty feet, it's fifty feet from a property line, so.
That's seventy feet if you're with a twenty foot setback.
So seventy, that, that.
The house can't be any closer than twenty feet to the, to the back property line, correct? Twenty feet. So if you have a seventy foot setback or a fifty foot setback.
I'm trying to just figure out Lil's questions and tell you where it comes to a property line where my property line is a hundred feet off the back of my house. At what point can that person start to build? What is the, what is the, what is the amount of distance from my property line to where that first panel can be? I think is the question.
Right now it's forty feet.
I think I see what you're saying. It also depends on how it's defined in your bylaw. So your bylaw suggests that a setback is.
Oh, that's what we're trying to.
Is, so if you, unless you, unless you don't address, so if setback in your bylaws is defined as the distance required from a street line to the nearest wall of a building. So you're using the street as your measurement point. So if you're saying that and maybe, maybe in this case you establish from the front property line, which is whether or not your, your, your neighbor has a, a property, you know, abutting yours that actually fronts the street. Or you say that in no ca, in no instance shall there be less than two hundred feet between the street and the beginning of the array. So then you don't account for.
It's a little different way of saying it. But that's only, you're only doing the front. What about the rest of it?
Well, like I said, Barry did something already. And if we, if we look at what they did and we think their numbers are too high, we can always reduce those. And they also have that part where the planning board can do less. And that's something that's been already approved by the AEG's office. So we can always go, if, if we're thinking, I think it says two hundred feet there, which may be too much. If we think it's too much, we can go down a little bit. My, my thing is I'm always thinking about more the, the dwelling versus the, the property. I mean, they're both just as important, but. Cause they talk about side, they talk about rear, they talk about front, and then they talk about adjacent properties. And you can also talk about the solar farm. If it's on that person's property that's building it, it's gotta be fifty feet from the dwelling. So if he said, Jim, if he said fifty feet from the sides, would that, would that, or someone saw it right would be next to that?
It wouldn't be any closer to, than seventy feet to the house. Sixty five. Fifteen on the side, seventy on the, on the back. It's fifty feet off the front, off the property line. And it's, and it's your back lot, you can't be any closer than twenty feet. That gives you seventy feet between your house and the first structure. Solar structure.
That's off the back of the sides. The side is less, right? Side's five feet less. Like I said, I, I mean, we can almost take something like that decrease the numbers a little bit. I think, I think those two hundred, that seems a little extreme. But also we can put in that piece where we talk about a certain amount of feet from we call the main dwelling or main house, whatever we would work, we would word it, or whatever's greater. But like I said, there's always that piece in there that gives us the, the board, the opportunity to, to make it less or two, based on whatever it may be.
So for now use Barry's and we can adjust it after that. I guess there's a caveat in there?
Which part of Barry's are you looking at that you're, where solar arrays and related equipment shall have a front, side, rear setbacks of a minimum of a hundred feet? In the event of a front, side, rear, or rear lot lines above one or more residences, that front, rear, or side setback should be a minimum of two hundred feet. I certainly can't support that second one.
No, no, no. I'm not, I'm not saying go with those numbers, Bob. That's not what I'm saying.
Same with the wording.
The wording, but we can change, we can change distances to fit what we feel is, you know, adequate for.
Listening and reading at the same time, screw myself up.
But I just think that's a good base to go with and we can fill the numbers in. We already talked about a hundred feet from the road.
Well, we don't have much time to fill numbers in. So let's do it right now.
Okay.
So we're about, we're going from forty to a hundred foot off the, the street.
Yeah.
Setback.
So forty.
Barry has all setbacks, front, side, and rear, minimum one hundred feet.
Well, did you read the first line though?
Something was two hundred feet though.
All facilities shall have front, side, and rear yard setbacks of at least fifty feet for any fencing. So that's where your fencing starts.
Right. But the arrays, minimum one hundred foot from all.
It's too much.
I, I agree.
So what would you rather instead of a hundred feet?
I don't have a problem with a hundred feet from the front. I'm thinking fifty from the sides and fifty from the rear.
Okay with that.
A hundred?
What is, what is, what is fifty feet actually become? Again, so you're talking twenty feet?
So in, in a case that someone has built their house twenty feet off the back lot, the back property line, that would be seventy feet.
And the sideline would be sixty five.
Sixty five, right.
You're not gonna find too many homes, twenty feet off the, the rear lot.
So a hundred feet from the front yard or from the front, from the road?
Yeah. So it's not a public route. That's the purpose of that.
Okay. And how much from the side and the rear? You said fifty before. Are you still sticking with that?
That's what I said.
I like seventy five. Cause we always have that option to be, to go less. The, the, the planning board has the ability to, to go less if they, for, for that, so. Doesn't say we can go more.
Right, we could word it that way, greater or less than, you know, the way the Barry ones does right now.
Well, it has, it has a stipulation that, that's what I'm saying. So if you start off higher, we can, you can always go less.
Yes.
So where they have a hundred feet.
I see that being difficult to do.
Yeah.
You get into public hearings and everything else and somebody's requiring for a lesser amount, I see it hard.
A lesser amount of.
To be able to grant, I'm sorry?
Lesser amount of fronting or setback?
Setback.
And you're seeing it as hard for us to decide?
Yeah.
Well, it's harder to do that versus the other direction.
Right. Where you could require more.
So, are you going with fifty on the side and the rear?
That's what I'm proposing.
And when you wanted a hundred from the front, it's okay.
I like seventy, seventy five. My main thing is, is, is a certain distance from the dwelling and that, that's why I really wanted to be added into it.
You gotta remember at that point, you've consumed a hundred and fifty feet of width on that piece of property.
I'm with the, I'm fifty feet. We've, we've gone from twenty, fifteen and twenty to fifty feet.
Fifteen and twenty to fifty.
From the current.
Oh, okay. You're accusing me. Okay. Rob?
Yeah, a hundred from the front, fifty side.
Okay.
Makes sense, I guess.
I, I kinda like the fifty feet too.
Cause that would be.
Fifty, a hundred, fifty, fifty?
Sixty five, actually sixty five from the side.
Side and the rear?
And that's from the property line.
Well, if you're gonna try following what they've got here. They've got, there's, like you say, all one, they're all locked together in one.
I don't necessarily like the wording of those. I mean, there's, there is certainly some stuff that could be cherry picked out here.
So Ken, can you look at Barry's J one?
You can maybe, maybe suggest property line?
As opposed to?
They use setback.
Or they use, yeah.
It depends on how they define setback in their bylaw. I think you have, in your bylaw, you define, you define lot lines which would allow you to state that you're measuring your various distances from those lot lines.
So from like side, front, side, and rear lot lines?
Yes.
Yes?
We usually do it.
Yeah. So a hundred from front, fifty, 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 side, rear, side.
Yep. You got that, Ken?
Hundred from the front, fifty, fifty, fifty.
Now should we address this evening Jim's, one of Jim's other things regarding amount or phasing of a project?
Before we go there.
Oh.
Just regards, does anybody wanna see it be a certain distance from a, the main dwelling or the house? Cause I can give you an example. So you have a hot, a lot that is a hundred and fifty feet wide. And a house is, it's a long ranch, it's fifty feet wide. So basically got, on its property line, it's got, you know, fifty feet on one side, fifty feet on the other side. So technically, from this back wall to the sidewalk, that's where the solar farm can go?
A hundred feet from the dwelling is where, is the minimum. Right?
I don't recall saying anything about it from, any measurements from a dwelling.
No, but that's, that's what Glenn's trying to figure out.
I'm trying, I think it should be a minimum from the dwelling. To me that.
I don't think it should.
Well, the minimum would be set, would be sixty five feet on the side lot and seventy on the, on the back, backside. If they, if they've built twenty feet to the.
From the back property line, yeah.
Each twenty and fifteen.
You want it spilled out? How much?
I like to have it spilled out. I mean, I also wanted to, you know, as I said from the beginning, I wanted to somehow be fair to, to, to both. You know?
I think we are. In the fact that an existing structure could end up with another house beside it on the sideline, just thirty feet away from each other.
What I, I'm just saying, and I'm not comparing it, the whole thing is why we're looking at solar, cause it is an issue in town where people feel what is acceptable for where it is and people viewing it and stuff like that.
And we're addressing that.
But again, I think it's, that's why I think it's a certain distance from someone's house. And we, and we have this, the, the distance from a property line, which should be, you know, I wanna sure it's a hundred and fifty feet. It was a hundred and fifty feet from the main dwelling. You already got a hundred feet from the, the road, so that's not gonna play a factor. You know, we're worried, we're more worried about someone driving by than we are for the neighbor.
That is not true. Because we wouldn't be suggesting these setback requirements that aren't, that are minimal regarding sideline and rear line, we're suggesting increasing them as well as front line.
But you're pushing it, you're pushing it further back from the road than you are from abutting.
But at what point do we, do we just take up, do we just consume all this possible property that a individual landowner cannot utilize to potentially monetarily benefit from the lease of a solar array? I mean, if we go back to what Ken said earlier, in the opening part of the meeting, that basically Granby has met their green community's requirement by having research. research and development available in an area in town. So now, what that tells me is if the board or if the town decided we could just eliminate solar arrays altogether.
I don't think you can do that.
Well, we've, we've met the requirement of the green community. And I'm not suggesting that we eliminate-
But I don't think you can eliminate solar.
Large. Uh, you are correct, because similar, in one of these things from the state, you know, the, yeah. The, you, you can't eliminate the small and medium. And I'm not saying that we should be eliminating the large at all.
I'm not either, I'm just thinking that, that large-
You're putting restrictions on it that, that are just gonna make it potentially-
We, we don't know that, that's not, we don't know if that'd be factual or not, because we gotta look at what property that, that people may be looking at.
But we don't know that it isn't factual.
Right, in some, in some cases it may be factual, but I'm looking at, is that what their, the solar arrays are being put in the proper places where there's enough land surrounding them, where it doesn't have, I guess, a negative impact.
They still provide the screening.
I understand all that, Bob, and I, we can agree to it, disagree, that, I'm fine with that. I, I just think it should be a minimum of seventy-five feet and a, a number from, you know, a certain distance from the dwelling. We're bored, we'll vote on something, and then I'll agree and everything, I understand that, it's just, you know, my, my, my thought is just a little different, it's not much different, it's just a little different. But like I said, I, I see both, both sides of it, absolutely. But I also think there's proper places for it to be, and, you know, someone has a, a ten acre lot, yeah, absolutely, I think it fills up where they could put a solar farm.
But that ten acre lot could be longer and narrower.
Again, that's where you have that piece that the, the, the planning board can say, gee, looking at this lot, that, that restriction doesn't really matter at this point, we can reduce that to fifty feet or whatever. Because in reality, it doesn't matter, because it's a straight, it's a hundred and fifty lot, a hundred and fifty feet wide lot, but it's two thousand feet long. So that the board can say, well, gee, those really don't play a factor here. That's what can happen, that's kind of the, the point I'm making then, too, that there are things that we can not have to say, yeah, it doesn't play, it's not a factor, we'll, we'll waive that, that a hundred and fifty feet, or a hundred feet, or whatever. Because those lots are possible.
Alright, there's language in that Berry, right?
There is, it says it gives the planning board to-
The option to do it.
The option to do it.
We have that option anyway.
May require a greater setback, may have special permit.
But if you put, excuse me, if you put it in the bylaw, the applicant will know, for sure. You know, start with these numbers and if the planning board sees that it's, you know, it's okay to make it smaller or whatever, they have the authority to do that. So are we done with the setbacks, or?
Yeah, I think if, if, if something, if we have to vote on something, then bring it forward to the town, or not to, to our public hearings, so... If we have something we wanna word a certain way, then we, the board will vote on it, and then that will become what we bring to the public hearings.
Okay, so I'm, uh, Ken can get all the changes together, which right now is just-
Yeah.
-a little bit, um, and then at our next meeting finalize them?
We can do that, absolutely.
So, we got one?
And that one is the one hundred foot?
Yeah.
And the fifty?
Correct.
From side and fifty from rear?
Side, 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 rear, side.
Well, if we're, if we're having him draft it that way, then as a board we should be voting on it. Because we're not gonna have him draft it and then kind of say, well, no, this is why we're having a discussion now.
Okay, so we're voting on this now?
I think that's, I think that's the proper way to do it, because then he's putting it together.
So you want me to, okay.
What do you think, should we wait?
Are you okay? Are we ready? Okay, I'll make a motion to change the setbacks for large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic to one hundred feet from the front. Fifty feet from each side and rear.
Second.
Is that, is a property line in there? Did it say property line? You said setback, did it say property line, or?
Change the setbacks. Do we wanna call it, change the setbacks from property line?
Well, I think Ken was saying it should say something-
Change the-
Property line.
Required distance between the property line and this, the front property line to be two hundred feet.
Okay, so-
Side property line's fifty.
Right.
Rear property line, fifty.
Take the two hundred out of your head.
Right. One hundred, fifty, fifty, fifty.
So, motion is to change the required distance between property lines for a large scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic to one hundred feet from front, from, the front, from front?
From property line.
Property line, fifty feet from each side, property line. And fifty feet from rear property line. Does that sound better?
Yeah, sounds good. Are you good with that, Glenn, with the, so we're, your minimum right now is seventy feet from the back of the dwelling to the beginning of the solar?
Only question, so-
Yeah.
So that's the back to the, 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 the first solar array, or first solar panel?
It's seventy feet right now.
Seventy feet. Jim, second, can you second the motion?
Would I second it? Oh, for, for this, yeah.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's, that's it, okay. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
You're opposed?
Yes.
Okay.
I just think it should be a little bit more, that's all.
Alright, two and a half hours, we've got that in common.
We have one vote. The other vote that we were gonna take, we didn't know who the project, who the bill was for, for the project.
Well, we do, it's, I mean, it's not gonna be easy, because it's, there's so many different factors that come into play.
So what is your timeline again? You want to have a public, public hearing by the first meeting in August?
I mean, true, but you can, you can also look at what we just did, addresses a lot. Just by changing that, addresses a lot. Doesn't seem like much, but it really addresses a lot.
Um, it'll be before our next, our next planning board meeting is Monday coming up.
Right.
But the one after that isn't until the twelfth, we have to have the, our version to the select board by the eighth.
So not through a public, so not a version that has gone through a public hearing?
No, because our public hearing would be after that, it'll be, uh, September twenty-third. That's the timeline we're working on, right?
That's not a heck of a lot of time for, it takes, it takes two and a half hours to get setbacks done.
Well, let's go, the next one you brought up was, uh, maybe do it quickly, if not, we'll, we can maybe adjourn. Inspections, you talked about inspections.
I think we should probably have them every five years.
Okay.
That's four inspections, maybe five throughout the, throughout the, uh-
So inspections every five years?
So what about maybe one after the first year, just, or you going from zero to five?
We're going, we're going from zero-
To five.
Five.
Zero being when the project is complete?
Well, it, it has to be inspected and signed off, that it meets all its conditions.
Yep.
Or if we go three years, and every five years after that?
Yeah, like three, five, fifteen, or three, five, ten, fifteen?
I'm okay with that, I'm, I'm fine with that.
So you go, first year's three, then five years after, so that way, or actually seeing it at eighteen years, which is the final, before the two years are up to five, five, five.
Or should we see that for the first year, I don't know.
First year's not much of a change, I mean, I'm more talking about where the growth of the plants and bushes and everything, it's just-
So the first year is really the building inspector?
Yes.
Because then he'll issue the permit.
What did you see, Ken?
I mean, it, I haven't seen, um, anything in the bylaws, um, that's always handled through, um, the conditions.
Oh, that's true.
So if the board has a standard set of conditions which require the applicant to come, you know, in a certain, within certain timeframes, that's kind of something that's established. You know, I've, I've worked with boards that have a set of so, because solar is, as you know, being approved left and right, um, boards have established standard sets which do put the onus on the applicant to do, um, basically provide the board with, um, sometimes it's annual, um, but, uh, routine reporting um, in regards to whatever they've established as what they want as part of that report. Measurement of, you know, trees, how the trees have grown, um, you know, the capacity of, of the, uh, solar array, um-
Well, we need to know if there's been any damage to the fencing that's securing it.
Mm-hmm.
Fire roads are being maintained.
Yep, and any reporting like that, where if, if another body comes and, and does an inspection and says, where, or, or, you know, if, if the fire department had to go up there, um, that some sort of reporting, you know, taking collection of that specific instance, um, you know, would be part of the report. And I think we can probably come up with standards as far as what you'd want in that report. I, you can probably put it in, um,
Well-
the bylaw, um, and you can set up a set of ki, just kind of preliminary standards or conditions. You can say all, all, um, solar, all development that is approved will require these conditions, and then list the conditions.
Yeah, but that, that there is, so, I think our bylaw should just read that whatever interval we're gonna require inspections, the inspections will have to consist of the, the, uh, the permit and the conditions placed on that.
How there's maintaining compliance.
Because they'll all be, they all vary a little bit.
Right. Maintaining compliance with the site plan and the conditions.
So, if, if, if one has a particular, uh, stormwater management system, or others don't?
Yeah.
So are we still saying inspections every five year once the project is completed, or?
No, Rob wants to go to, uh, three and five.
It'll be three and every, every five years after. Three, eight, thirteen, eighteen.
Three years after project is completed, or after permitted, what do you wanna say?
Same difference.
You can say permitted, permitted, because you, you, right, permitted is what's actually-
Well, I, I thought you were referring to permitting.
The building's been inspected, you can operate it now.
From the building inspector.
Okay, I thought permit meant obtaining a building permit.
That's what I-
From this, from this, three years after's a certificate of operation.
Three years after, that's a certificate of operation, that what they call it?
Certificate of, um, what is it, occupancy permit? What is the, the building inspector?
It would be occupancy, but you're not occupying one, so-
Certificate of completion? I mean, that's... Every town has a different-
So, three years after certificate of completion, then every-
Well, we, we, just make sure whatever the wording is, we have the wording, if you don't, if we actually don't have a certificate of completion.
We, yeah, we have to, I guess-
We gotta find out what actually it is, that we're signing off on it actually, what it's called, we can just put that in there. Insert name here.
So we'll find out what it's called, but, but it's three years after it's completed.
Three, and then five years every year after that, so it's three, eight, thirteen, eighteen.
I love that statement, five years every year after that, like that.
Five years, then every five years, right? Until, every five years until project is decommissioned, right?
No. Well, yes, but, but, it's, well, I guess, because they'll go for a twenty-year thing, and then they'd have to renew for, like, you know, probably limit those to thirty years.
Are we putting a window on that? Did I miss that part?
Well, we talked about it previously, but I think, I think these should be permitted for a set period of time. They can come back if the, if, if, for, they're still operating at, at ninety percent capacity and they're doing well, and they, they wanna come back for another five years or ten years, then fine.
I agree. I think there should be a timeframe on it.
The, the town of Berry establishes the term of the permit to be twenty years.
There you go.
Permit may be extended, extended for up to two, five-year terms, any further extension shall require a new application.
That's what Jim just said.
Perfect. Where, whereabouts is that?
That's, um, page one, uh, A. three.
I'd, I'd take that.
Yep.
Just the way that is.
Initial term of any special permit will be twenty years. That's the term of the special permit, that's not anything about inspections.
That's right, we're trying to live until all of the connection operate.
We've already got the inspection.
Two different things.
Okay, let's stick with the inspections, I'm not done with that. Inspections three years after the certificate of completion, or whatever it's called. Then every five years until-
But that's where that comes into place.
As you would say, decommissioning.
Decommissioning.
Until project is decommissioned, right?
Right, because that would trigger, if they, if we, if we do that, that would trigger another inspection at twenty years.
However, I think we should have this initial term.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then that goes, that's, that's a separate-
That's gonna be next, okay.
Then, okay, so we're done with that, but we can't vote on it yet, and that one's gonna be there.
Because we don't have the wording?
Right.
This is more of an informal vote.
Yeah, that's, we can still, that's, that's just a-
Just sort of the word is, with the, with the calling of, it'll be ways more.
Okay, I'll make the motion so I can, I'll read it. Require inspections every three years after the, the certificate of completion.
Is issued.
Is issued, then every five years until the project is decommissioned.
Do, do you say every three years?
Inspection, three years after the certificate of completion.
Okay, I thought you said every three years and then you went on to say every five, okay.
Okay, so, you want me to read it again?
And every other year.
You want me to read it again?
And leap years.
Listen this time, okay? Inspections every, inspections three years after certificate of completion is issued, then every five years until project is decommissioned. That's the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. He's thinking.
I'm thinking, uh, okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Okay.
Because I'm thinking though, so we're- Because I'm thinking though, so we go to the next thing that's automatically going to trigger an inspection of twenty years.
Okay, and now we're going to the, um, initial term of any special permit? Right?
Yep.
Special permit will be twenty years.
Well, this is, uh, just for. Okay, just for solar facilities. Just want to make sure that it's, we're not term, terming out something else, yes.
Yeah, you'd probably just create a subsection for applicability.
Yeah.
Well, it's only solar bylaw.
Right, and that's what I wanted to look up here and see if they.
You want to make that motion? You can just read it off of the.
I can't, Glenn, talk over.
Well, I'm just thinking though, because I want to see that when, after that twenty years is another inspection, because if we're going to renew that for five years, we should be inspecting it at that point.
Well, we have that because it hasn't been decommissioned, and.
But that would, that would trigger, so that's eighteen, we wouldn't see it again until, I'm just saying, we renewing their permit at that point, so, so we can take a look at the, take a look at it before we just renew their permit for additional five years, or additional, yeah, five years.
You can condition the renewal on the fact that.
Right, you said inspection required.
Yeah, inspection required for your next renewal.
So how about we word it, um, do you have it right there, Will?
Yep.
So the initial term of any special permit will be twenty years for such other time as determined by the planning board. A permit may be extended for up to two, five-year terms upon inspection.
Yeah.
At time of extension?
Yeah.
And leave that word inspection as vague as possible so that.
Right.
We can determine what the inspection.
Correct.
Or up to five-year terms upon inspection of.
Of said facility.
Permit may be extended up to, up to two, five-year terms upon inspections.
I'm missing something. You want to put upon inspection of said facility?
I think it's applied, because we're, we're talking about.
The permit may be extended for up to, up to two.
Two, five-year terms upon inspection.
We've already listed that a permit is only good for twenty years previously. In the previous one, right?
Right, yeah, right, so the initial, the, the initial term of any special permit will be twenty years or such other time as determined by the planning board. The permit may be extended up to two, five-year terms upon inspection of a solar array of solar, that would.
Of said facility.
Of said facility.
That we keep abroad.
Then we do any of them.
Any further extension shall require a new application.
Okay, so were you making that motion?
Yes, I was making that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion.
I want to hear this one, it's just a good one, it's one I'll wait for.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
I was going to have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.